Good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board on Thursday, March 6th, 2025. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the resolution of regularly scheduled meetings of the Princeton Planning Board for February 2025 through January 2026. A copy was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on January 8th, 2024. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolutions was published in the January 17th, 2025 edition of the Princeton Packet. Notice of this meeting was also published, was also posted to the municipal website, Notice that all regular and special meetings of the Princeton Planning Board will be held electronically via Zoom, was transmitted to the Princeton Packet and The Times, and was filed with the Clerk of Princeton on Tuesday, January 17th, 2023. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. During hearings on applications for the development, members of the public will have an opportunity to comment and ask questions. Questions may be asked after an applicant's witnesses have testified. Public comment is heard by the board after an applicant's representatives have finished their presentations and have been questioned by the Planning Board members and staff. Those wishing to comment orally should virtually raise your hand by clicking on the reactions or raise hand icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or if participating by phone, by pressing star nine. Oral comments will be taken in the order in which hands were raised. We ask with respect that members of the public express your views in three minutes or less. We will have a countdown clock to help speakers keep track of time. Please note that speakers who exceed three minutes will be interrupted. Inappropriate public comment containing obscenity, hate speech, or relating to matters not before the board will be muted. Ms. Phillip, will you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Mr. Badekheimer? Ms. Capizoli?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mayor Frida?
Here.
Mr. McGowan? Ms. Nuka?
Here.
Ms. Perlmutter?
Here.
Mr. Taylor? Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Here.
Ms. Wilson? Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. For the record, I note that there are six members of the public in attendance tonight. And Curry, one of those people is Dante Alfieri, Alfieri, who I believe is the applicant's lawyer?
Yes, he's being moved over now, thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any announcements to be made? Justin, Jerry, any of the staff members?
No.
No? Okay. Thank you. Have we, do we have any subcommittee reports? This week? No? Moving right along. We do have minutes to be voted, to be approved. These were the minutes of the April 11th, 2024 special meeting, and I want to thank Curry for all the work that she did on these minutes. They were quite extensive. So, thank you for that, Curry. Do we have any questions or comments on the minutes from the, from the board? No, not seeing, not seeing any. Do I have a motion to approve the board, the minutes for this meeting?
I'll move to approve, Julie.
Julie, Julie Capizoli approves. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
David Cohen seconds. Thank you very much. All those in favors, please say aye.
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 Any opposed or abstaining? Okay, thank you very much. We also have on the docket a resolution and findings of fact. This was for 21 Wiggins LLC. It's a minor site plan, and this is a modification to an approved site plan located at 21 Wiggins Street, file number P2424-523PM. Were there any comments or suggested edits to the resolution? No, not, not seeing any. I believe, Curry, we need a roll call vote for this?
That is correct.
Okay, if you, David?
I'll move it.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Claudia.
Claudia, you were not present at that meeting. Or, or you were, you were present, but... Oh, okay, Jer, she didn't vote on it because we had more than enough members. We had 11 members. So she's not on the roll call, but she can, she can make a second. Okay, yes, I'm sorry. We accept your, your second.
Okay, okay, moved by David Cohen and seconded by Claudia Wilson Anderson. Thank you both very much. Curry, would you go ahead with the roll call, please?
Thank you. Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mayor Frida?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Ms. Perlmutter?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Which brings us to the, the-
I'm sorry, Ms. Wilson Anderson.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Is that a yes? I'm sorry.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all very much. Brings us to our single application on the, on the schedule for tonight. This is the Stony Brook Regional Sewage Authority. It's a minor site plan with conditional use located at 290 River Road, block number 1503, lot 11, file number P2424-503CO/P with the MLUL deadline of February 17th, 2025 extended to March 7th, 2025. Jerry, are we in order?
Publication and service in order, and the board has jurisdiction.
Thank you very much. We're going to swear in the staff. Who will comment on this? We have Justin Lesko, Ian Henderson, Dirk Bridger, and Dan Weissman here tonight.
If you could all raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony to give be the truth?
I do.
So, so sworn or affirmed?
Thank you, and I believe Ian's going to take the lead on this?
Absolutely, yep. Thank you, Mr. Share. So, good evening, everybody. I'm gonna just set my screen to share. Should pop up? Okay. And if you can see my cursor, that's actually located, the, that's where the trailer itself is located. So tonight, we have before us applicants of Stony Brook Regional Sewage Authority. By the way, Jerry, we'll mark this, I guess, PB1?
Yeah, exactly, and if you could just describe what it is, Ian, that'd be great.
Sure, so currently on my screen, we have the Parcel Explorer. This is Rowan University's publicly accessible Parcel Explorer program. And we, within the blue highlight, we have the entirety of the Stony Brook Regional Sewage Authority with the subject trailer in the southeast corner. And so this is in the 290 River Road, and so I'll just zoom out just slightly. You can see we have River Road itself and the Millstone River. And in, in short, they're looking to replace the trailer that is actually, it's been there for 28 years already. The site is within the former township R2 Zone. It is not located in a locally, locally designated historic district. Even looking at New Jersey Historic Preservation's Lucy 2.0 website, the parcel is not located in a state or nationally designated district or site, or historic site. We're finding it, you know, in the edge of Princeton's northeastern border, next to the river, as I mentioned. The, the treatment center itself serves Princeton, South Brunswick, West Windsor, Hopewell, and Pennington. And so the, the tanks and the facilities are separated from the housing in the area through naturally wooded areas. And we have a lot, quite a large solar array to the south of it. You have the good preserve not terribly far away, and again, wooded buffers surrounding.
Yeah, and I think it's actually serves both Hopewell's borough and the township.
Oh, it does, yes. Yep. It's an existing 60 by 12 prefabricated office trailer. And just in general, that they're looking to, the applicant is looking to demolish the current trailer, construct a new one, and incorporate some ADA walkway improvements. Within our master plan, in the utility element, it actually specifically lists that at the SBRSA has a rated capacity currently of 13.06 millions of gallons per day. But they're looking to potentially expand the capacity up to 20 millions of gallons per day of treatment. So, the increased office space, the doubling of the trailer seems certainly reasonable for that growth. Note, there's no additional existing parking where it was proposed, so if, we were just asking the applicant to provide any details about additional office staffing or office space needs. And if there were any additional staff members, how they would, if there was any foreseen parking or circulation concerns with that. The reason it's before the board tonight is because you have conditional use authorization. I just wanted to bring before the board that, that the conditions are the, the planning board thought process for the for the, for these conditions are located within Section 10B 320. And there's, there's three principles that are considered by the board when determining the, the conditional use. So, first, the local need of the proposed facility and whether or not it's adequately served by existing facilities. Two, the existence of nuisance factors and whether there's or not there's adequate shielding. And three, the effect of the amount of traffic. So, so I mean, from my own opinion, we, as far as the local need, we see that it serves, you know, a large number of neighboring towns. You know, an essential facility with wastewater treatment. As far as the existence of nuisance factors, it's the, the trailer, as you can see it with my cursor, located just in the corner, we have adequate natural buffer around it. You know, far from, from neighboring communities and, and the amount of traffic. Well, we can have the applicant speak to anything, but, but it's certainly, if there's no parking or increased number of workers, it doesn't seem like there would be any significant amount of traffic. So at this point, I'll, I'll hand it off to the applicant to propose, or, you know, to fill in for any additional details.
Great. Mr. Alfieri, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, thank you. Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Dante Alfieri, on behalf of the applicant. Thank you, Mr. Henderson, for providing a very detailed rundown of what this application is. As Mr. Henderson stated, this is an existing site. We are looking to replace an existing structure with a slightly larger structure. I do have our engineer, who will provide some testimony with relation to the proposal itself. I also do have Mr. Doling here, in the event there's some questions with relation to the Sewage Authority directly. So without further ado, I'll have Mr. Nexon come on and provide some testimony.
What I'll do, Mr. Alfieri, what we always do is, I'll swear in your witnesses upfront, and then to the extent they have to be qualified, you do that when it's, when you call them. So the witnesses, Mr. Dexon and Doling?
Nexon and Doling.
Yep, if both of you could raise your right hands?
Activate your camera, please, Mr. Doling.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please, each of you state your full name and spell your last name.
Chris Doleing, D-O-E-L-L-I-N-G.
Michael Nexon, N-E-X-O-N.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Nexon, could you please provide your qualifications for the board?
Sure. My educational background is, I have a bachelor's in science and civil engineering from the University of Hartford, and a master's of science in environmental engineering from Worcester Polytech Institute in Massachusetts. I've been a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey for 14-plus years now, and a active member of the American Water Works Association and the New Jersey Water Environmental Association.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Accept your qualifications.
Thank you, Chairman. So, Mr. Nexon, as you heard Mr. Henderson state, that we are here seeking the board's approval with relation to the demolition of an existing building and then construction of a new building. So if you could just orient the board to the site itself and then just describe what the proposal entails.
Sure, and I, I thank everyone for the detailed description before that pretty much gave a, a pretty good description, so not much to add to that, but am I able to share the screen? Because I can bring up a plan that's maybe easier to, as a visual, or?
Yes.
Mr. Dexon, now, this is a part of this plan set?
Yes, this was a part of the submitted plan set.
Now, the colorized sheet, that, that's not part of the, that wasn't colorized in the plan set, correct?
You mean the map right here, the zoning map?
Yep, yep.
The submitted hard copies, maybe not?
Okay, why don't we mark, let's mark this in, it's Exhibit A1.
Okay.
And if you could just state for the record what it is?
It's drawing C1 of the sets that was submitted with the application, showing the tax map and zoning map. And also the breakdown in the new and existing impervious areas with the old trailer being removed. The area where the existing trailer will be removed will be restored to a grass area. The new trailer will be positioned just to the south and east along the tree line there. It will use the same existing utility pole for electrical power.
Let me just, you're testifying about a document which is up. But what's up is the tax map and the zoning map. Are you testifying about them or something else?
I was just kind of gonna discuss and page through, is that?
Oh, sure, okay.
Sorry, yeah.
No, that's, that's right.
Just describing what was lower in the corner here, but I'll page through.
Oh, I see, okay.
It's not moving forward, bear with me. Let's see if I move this. There we go. So now you're looking at drawing C2, part of the application, which is a site survey plan of the River Road wastewater treatment plant that the individual showed, showed an aerial of earlier. You can see the trailer, existing trailer location down in the corner as shown before. Moving on to the site plan with where the existing trailer is in the dash square and the new trailer location next to it, the utility pole in between.
And that's, and that's C3, correct?
Correct, I'm sorry.
So, no, no problem.
And showing the new 60 by 23 trailer with the new ADA ramp to the entryway. So general location of the trailer is the same along this tree line, wooded tree line, same access through the plant access road, same parking as before. There's employee parking behind the main operations building, in front of the main operations building, and in front of the existing location of the trailer. This was just another, C4 was just a zoomed in drawing of what just explained. C5 was the existing conditions for water and fire protection located within the application. There's multiple fire hydrants for fire protection. The whole site is serviced by a 20-inch line that is provided by the water purveyor, New Jersey American Water, which is the private utility for water in the Princeton Township. Here, I'll just move on to some layouts of the trailer itself. Here's the office trailer layout. This was included in the application. General plan view with some offices, some larger areas for conference and meeting places, and utility closets for filing. Some elevation views of the trailer. Pretty standard double-wide trailer to be used. I, this was not in color, I'm, I'm not sure of what the color will end up being. Here is some details on the trailer itself. The trailer will sit and be supported upon concrete and block piers with appropriate tie-downs and connections. Paging to the next was a general layout of the piers, but then a more detailed pier layout in the signed and sealed copy. The next page after the plan view for the foundation plans was also more detailing of the piers. After that was some general calculations supporting the structural layout. And then we have details on the ADA ramp and stairway that will provide for entrance to and exit to the trailer. And I will then, and that pretty much was the sum of all the documents provided with the appropriate forms, which Princeton Planning Board Committee had reviewed, and had some general comments, I think through staff, two of those being referring to Mercer County Planning Board waiver and approval, and the Delaware Raritan Canal Commission. We have received, submitted and received a determination of no impact to the county from Mercer County Board and are awaiting a jurisdictional determination from the DRCC.
And we'll provide a copy of those, correct, Mr. Nexon, to the board?
Yes. Yep, no problem.
Thank you. Is that the sum of your testimony, Mr. Nexon?
Yes, yeah, I'll open up if there's any questions.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Nexon? David?
Yeah, I just wanted to sort of confirm, I know that you removed some impervious coverage around the site in order to get under the municipal, I guess it's 400 square foot limit for, for a minor project. What I wanted to confirm is the whole site drains basically to River Road, correct? So, so the impervious that was removed is draining to the same area that this trailer is draining to as well.
Yes, it is part of the same drainage area.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? I have a, I'm sorry, Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. And Mr. Nexon, I don't know if this question is appropriate for you or for Mr. Doling, but one comment in the staff report is that required bicycle parking spaces for public utilities are not identified in the Princeton zoning regulations. For uses that are not identified, the code states that other building types that should not fit into one of the above categories shall be referred to the Planning Board for determination of the appropriate parking space requirements. So, I believe the documentation indicated that there were 41 existing parking spaces on the Stony Brook Regional Silverage Authority site. And I was just wondering if we can get some testimony as to if those spaces are adequate for the operations at the site, and what, if any, there would be for increase in staffing and therefore a need for parking for the site.
I believe that's a better question for Mr. Doling.
Mr. Doling, you've been sworn in. We'd just like to qualify you first.
Yes.
Before answering the question.
Okay. In my-
What is your relationship with the applicant?
I am the manager of engineering at the sewage plant, been working there for six and a half years.
Thank you. So the question presented by Mr. Weissman is, is the parking that's currently there sufficient as, as the site currently operates? And then with this anticipated new building replacing the existing building, will it remain sufficient?
Yes, it is sufficient currently and will remain sufficient.
Approximately, how many employees are currently working out of this space? And do you expect to see additional staffing once you go to the larger trailer?
I think we have a build-out, the staffing of 48 or 49. I think we are currently staffed around 46. The engineering trailer is currently staffed at three. And I'm sorry, the last part that was, is there adequate parking for that? Yes, there is adequate parking for that. We operate on a shift, a rotation basis, so a lot of the staff is rotated throughout the day. The parking remains open, we have open spots.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other questions for?
A pleasure for Mr. Doling. Mr. Doling, on average, how many open spots are there every day?
I don't know if I've ever counted, I would say there's probably five.
Five or so.
Six, yeah.
Hey, thank you.
David?
And just to, I think, pick up from something Dan had said, do you have any employees who do ride a bicycle to the, to work here? And do you have any bicycle parking on the site?
We don't have any bike racks. You could lean your bike against the wall, I suppose. I do not know of anybody who bikes, unless maybe a motorcycle, but that's not really what you're talking about. That's not a bike.
All right, seeing no other questions from board members, I'd like to open the meeting to public comment, see if there's any members of the public that wish to comment on this application. We have five members in attendance. I don't see any hands up if you have, if you have any comment on this application or any questions for Mr. Doling or Mr. Nexon. Please raise your hand now. Going once, going twice? Not seeing any, I will now close public comment, thank you very much.
Mr. Vice Chair, could we ask Dan whether there's anything else he wants to bring to the attention of the board?
Absolutely. Mr. Weissman?
Thank you, no, that was, that was the only comment I had. The only other comments in the staff report, the one was addressed by Mr. Nexon regarding other agency approvals, and then the other comment regarding estimate for inspection fees.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Do we have any any outstanding questions from the board or any deliberation comments, David?
I, I guess I'd just like to suggest, even if you don't have any employees who currently bicycle, the world is changing. Hopefully, there may be one at some point in the future. I think it would be a good idea to put in at least like a single bike rack in conjunction with the new trailer.
Would you have any objections?
I, I'm suggesting that as a condition of approval.
Yes.
No objection to that?
No objections, yeah. Thank you very much. So we will add that to a condition?
Ian has his hand raised.
I'm sorry, Ian?
Yeah, just to clarify, just in case anyone were looking, I believe I've misread the number, but if anyone's looking for the principles and considering a board decision about conditional use, it's T10B 321. So I want to make sure I get the number correct.
Thank you for that. Okay. Seeing no other questions or comments from the board, do I have a motion to, to move this application?
I'm happy to move approval.
David, thank you very much, and do we have a second?
I can second.
Paula V., thank you very much for that. Ms. Phillip, would you please take the vote?
If I, if I just may go with the relief is.
I'm sorry, Jerry.
Minor site, minor site plan approval, and the staff is, has recommended minor site plan and the condition and conditional use approval and the conditions that would, I just see three. One is what David just articulated about the bike rack. The second is about construction cost estimates. And the third is approvals from the, maybe necessary from the Mercer County Planning Board, although I understand you've already gotten a no action letter and from the Delaware, and we want that submitted and the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission. And from the Delaware, and we want that submitted and the Delaware and Raritan Canal Commission. And that, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. So with those conditions, uh, Curry, would you take the vote, please?
Thank you. Ms. Capizoli?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mayor Frida?
Yes.
Ms. Nuka?
Yes.
Ms. Pearl Mutter?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson Anderson?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. We appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I guess the only thing left is a motion to adjourn.
I'm happy to offer that as well.
Thank you, David. Do we have a second?
Yay, yes.
Okay, Julie, thank you very much.
Great job, Owen.
Okay, record time. All right, if you are driving, watch out for the salamanders.